Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, June 4th, 2018. I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet at the beginning of the summer season, we are ever mindful of the many connections that our community has with the heart and soul of the United States of America, including the fact that we were, for many years, the hometown of one of the gentlemen credited with being one of the founders of American Flag Day, Dr. Bernard Sagrand. And we know that this coming weekend, we are going to have a celebration here on the Riverwalk in commemoration of that prestigious honor. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America and our armed services. And we just ask that each one of these men and women be showered with this special blessing as they go about their vital mission in defense of our liberties. Also, we want to remember all those from our community who are infirmed or ill tonight, and we just ask for a special blessing to be showered upon them. And also, we want to ask for direction and guidance and understanding and vision as we act on the various affairs of business before the City Council, knowing that each member of the City Council is here in their own way and their own heart and mind to do what is in the best interest of our community and its future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Uh, let's see. Excited to remind my gonna be on. Alderman Atack, would you use the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brown?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
O'Brien?
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer? Saron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
So, let the record reflect that twelve of the fourteen elected aldermen are present and accounted for this evening's meeting, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. And we will so note that in our minutes. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
We don't have anything this evening.
Nothing? Anybody else have anything? Okay, consent agenda, Alderman Atack.
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file April 2018 City Council financial report. Approvals, June 1st, 2018, payroll in the amount of $822,245.45. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,214,082.82. City Council minutes from May 21st, 2018. Ordinance 18-38, annexing and zoning 511 Pine Street. Ordinance 18-30, requesting a transfer of certain parcels from the Batavia Park District. Resolution 18-59-R, authorizing the transfer of property to the Batavia Park District. I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Twelve yes, no, no's, two absent. Okay, moving to item number six, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? All right, moving to item number seven. We're very honored tonight to have Jim Davidson with us, who was from the Military Order of the Purple Heart. And if you would come forward, and we're told you would like to make a brief presentation to us.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Davidson. I'm from South Batavia, also known as North Aurora. And our organization, the Military Order of the Purple Heart, is comprised of military veterans who were awarded the Purple Heart for being wounded in action. I also have with me Richard B. He's another member of our organization. And we have been working with communities up and down the Fox Valley, as well as Kane County, Kendall County, in having communities becoming Purple Heart communities. A couple of weeks ago, I approached the city of Batavia, and here we are tonight. So, I believe we do have a resolution here to proclaim Batavia as being a Purple Heart city. I appreciate that very much. It's to honor, like I say, all the veterans who have been awarded the Purple Heart, so I'd like to thank you.
Well, before, don't run away from the podium, because I'm gonna come up and give you this proclamation as soon as the council gets through voting on it. I just have a question, because this came up the other day after this got published, that you guys were going to be here, and I didn't know if we were gonna have some folks in the audience or not about this. Is there such a thing as a list of everybody, like from Kane County, that's ever gotten the Purple Heart?
Not that I'm aware of. Jake Zimmerman is at the Veterans Assistance Commission in Kane County. He would probably be the most likely person to be able to, you know, have such a list.
Because I believe, once you got the Purple Heart, at least in World War II, you were given some type of a certificate or a medal or something.
Yes.
And so, apparently, we had a gals in town who were, father was in World War II, and they think they have a medal, but they were, and they maybe even have a certificate, but they were wondering if was there a master list. And I think where it started, they came in our city council chambers here, and if you saw outside, we've got, you know, the list of all those who served for Batavia in World War I and World War II. And they were curious to know, because their father's name was on that, but they were wondering if there was a list of all the medals that these people were.
Well, the main record for everybody is their DD 214. So, if they could find that, or even work through the Veterans Assistance Commission in Kane County, Jake Zimmerman, he may be able to locate that for them.
I mean, we're seventy-five years kind of after the fact here in all this, but there's now people that show an interest in.
Well, we just buried a man that we lost seventy-seven years ago.
Right, right. So, I mean, it's interesting, I think, fascinating and honorable that not even today, as the service we just did last week, that we still take the time to do that.
Yes.
The turnout, Alderman Callahan and I were there, among others from this, I don't know if any of the rest of you were there. Alderman Brown, were you there?
No, I couldn't.
Okay, I forget.
Well, I was there, and there was at least three hundred people there.
There was a lot of people there, and it was very heartwarming to see that.
Yes.
And so, I just wanted to make that mention, that it certainly is something that still remains very near and dear to many people's hearts, and I think it shows the appreciation that the world still holds for veterans and the amount of service they get, so. Alderman Atack, you want to read the proclamation?
Yes. Whereas the city of Batavia, Illinois, has a great admiration and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have served or are selflessly serving their country and our communities in the armed forces of the United States. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces of the United States have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas over eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight of Kane County's sons and daughters have given their lives while serving in the armed forces of the United States. And whereas citizens of the city of Batavia have received the Purple Heart Medal as result of being wounded while engaged in combat with the enemy, construed as singularly meritorious act of essential service. And the city of Batavia seeks to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, signing of this official proclamation, do hereby proclaim the city of Batavia, Illinois, to be a Purple Heart city honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect our freedoms. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. I move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second?
And the motion of Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the proclamation. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no, no's, two absent. So, on behalf of the people of Batavia, it's my honor to present the Purple Heart of Kane County group, our proclamation, and to carry this forward.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. So, you can take that and put it up into your city, city hall, wherever you find appropriate.
If you want to take a picture? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, we're very honored tonight to have the Batavia Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Holly Dickman, here with us, and she's always got some interesting stories to share.
I don't know if they're necessarily interesting, but I'll share them. So, thank you all very much for having me here this evening and giving us an opportunity to share with you some of our upcoming events. There's a lot, so I will speak quickly, but please remember that all of this, and I just wrote it down from our website, I swear, is all listed on our website at bataviachamber.org. Many of our events, you need to register for in advance, so please check it out after, if any of this seems interesting. Again, I make no promises. So, first, we have a ribbon cutting this Wednesday, June 6th, at 4:00 p.m. at A Accurate Door. Again, another ribbon cutting on Friday, June 8th, at 9:30 a.m. for Weedy Corp., which you'll hear from in just a second. It's a super cool product that's now going to be manufactured here in the United States and right here in Batavia. Another ribbon cutting for Medvesta Hypnosis on Tuesday, June 12th. You should come to that one. That one is at 9:00 a.m. Next, we have our Batavia Women in Business Luncheon on Tuesday, June 12th, at 11:30 a.m. That will be hosted at the Lincoln Inn, and this one is going to feature Kelly Standing. Her topic is networking not working: How to Become a Master Mingler. We try to draw them in, don't we? Next, we've just started a new thing. We had some advice from some of our members that said they can't necessarily get to our evening networking events, so we decided to start offering one in the morning before work starts, and we've called it B.C. Squared. It's the Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club. Wednesday, June 13th, at 7:30 a.m., and that will be at the Comfort Inn and Suites on Fabian Parkway. And I think we're having it at a hotel, because maybe I can't get up that early, so I have to just kind of roll out and get to the Breakfast Club. Next, we have our forty-fourth Annual Batavia Chamber Golf Classic. This year, we'll be taking it back to Orchard Valley. Many people suggested that we try it out again, and they have been wonderful to work with. And that is Friday, June 22nd. It's a 1:00 p.m. shotgun start, lunch and dinner included. Should be a fun day of golfing and raffles and prizes and all kinds of fun stuff to do on the course. Next, on Thursday, June 28th, at 7:30 a.m., we have, we're continuing our HR educational programming that we've partnered with the Valley Industrial Association, and this one is on employment law. So, if you can, please join us for that. That's hosted at the Valley Industrial Association. And we have another ribbon cutting on Friday, June 29th, at noon, and that one is for Fast Color. So, keeping, again, still keeping Mayor Shelkey very busy with ribbon cuttings, and also I got a request this week, because everybody knows that, you know, we kind of go hand-in-hand to all this stuff. They asked, the Batavia Youth Baseball asked if Mayor Shelkey would throw out the first pitch of their All-Star Game this coming up weekend, so he was kind enough to say yes to that as well, so thank you.
That's twelve o'clock on Sunday.
It is at twelve o'clock on Sunday at Piran Field.
I got that right here.
So, any questions for me? Still a lot going on at the chamber. We just reached four-hundred-and-forty-five members today. We had three people randomly, it must have been a happy Monday and sunny outside, we had three members join today, so it takes us to four-forty-five, so.
That's an all-time record, I think.
I believe so. The oldest number I have is we have some letter openers that look super old, and they say congratulations on four-hundred members, so. Yeah, for a town our size with an estimated about twelve, thirteen-hundred businesses, that's a pretty high percentage, though admittedly, only three-hundred of those four-forty-five are actually Batavia businesses. So, we cover a much larger territory than just our own community. And hopefully, it's because they like what we do around here.
No, I think it is because all these people in these other towns wish they were in Batavia.
I think, you know, I think so too. You know, maybe we'll draw some of them in to hang a shingle here in our fair town. But I wanted to introduce to you a man that has already impressed me in the, like, three minutes that I have known him. His name is Sebastian Weedig, and he is from Weedy Corp. And as I said, he's got some really cool stuff to show you about what they're gonna be producing here in Batavia. So, please give a warm Batavia welcome from Indiana today, Sebastian Weedig.
Thank you, everyone. First, I want to say thanks to our service members here. I mean, I think it's a great honor for all of us. I'm an immigrant myself, and I truly value what this country offers, so thank you. So, to us, yeah, we're a company that has a long history over in Europe and Germany, started about thirty-five years ago, and we make the backboard for anything, wet room, shower systems, bathroom-related. We put in this foam board.
Well, it's very?
It's very light. It's made out of foam in the center, and then we put a mortar on it, like a concrete product, so very simple, but what you can do, the possibilities are endless. Now, you can make any shape out of it. Mainly, what we do right now is we create showers. Basically, you have the base, the shower base, so you have a sloped floor in it, so the water can go, drain off really quickly. You have the walls that you can put in. Everything is ready in this kit that you just slap in, so the time-consuming, oh, it's not time-consuming at all anymore. Prior to this product, it took several days to create a shower, tiled shower. With our product, you can do it in a matter of a day or less. So, the clue of this is really time savings for contractors and hotels, anything. We sell this product nationwide. We have a operation the size of about four-hundred-and-fifty employees right now, corporate-wide, and we're looking to expand that significantly in the next coming years, mainly out of the city of Batavia. So, thanks for welcoming us here, and we're happy to be here, working with all you guys.
Well, I think, and certainly on behalf of the city of Batavia, we're very pleased to have you here and welcome you here, and specifically, I want to cite the, you know, kind of the research innovations that you're bringing to the world with what you're doing here. And if you go out there, you're at eleven, I got it here, you're at 1160 Pearson, right?
That's correct.
And how big is the facility you have now, or are you gonna expand it a little bit? Is that the?
We'd like to expand. We're already, even though we're new, we have one-hundred-and-ten-thousand square feet right now, and we already struggling with space, so in the next coming years, we definitely want to expand. And like I said, this product, we're just, it's just starting to take off in the United States. It's about a ninety-million euro operation currently. The United States just in the very beginning of this, so we're very hopeful that this will become a major-sized operation, meaning, I don't know how many more square feet, but a lot, and a lot more employees. Hopefully, all out of the city of Batavia.
Well, you know, just having you in town and what you are proposing, and perhaps new innovative ideas that you obviously want to produce, I was interested to look at your brochure, and this side, it's in English, and then this side, it's a different, is Spanish, or what?
French. I honestly didn't even look at it.
Dutch?
French.
French?
French.
So, obviously, you're international in touch, and I just would point out to you that where you are out there, you are next-to-the-world headquarters of Aldi grocery stores, which is based in Munich, Germany, and this is their U.S. headquarters in Batavia, so we have the Germans there. Around the corner from you, we have DNS Container, which is Japanese, and I've been there with some high-ranking Japanese officials. Just down the street from you, we have Chicago Export Importers, which is Chinese, the mainland Chinese. And so, and then we have DNS Container, which is Japanese ideas for making innovative aerosol and delivery cans. So, we've got kind of a little international world out there, right where you are, and so welcome your international extension that you're bringing with you. I would note that, you know, you talk about innovations and things within about twenty-five-hundred feet of your doorstep. You're, you go to the southeast of you, and you're on the Fermi National Accelerator Laboratory. Last November, Fermilab was honored by the International Association of Electrical Engineers, because they credit Fermilab with the science that they pioneered out there, that they developed the formulas that were critical and made possible the creation of the MRI, Medical Research Machine. And they now gave Fermilab a big plaque that they have hanging on the wall out there, crediting Fermilab with being the developers of the MRI. So, Batavia has always had kind of a history of innovative stuff going back to the eighteen-seventies. We were the windmill manufacturing capital of the world, and we developed wind energy. Now, we're into high-energy physics, and certainly, all the other things that are happening out there, you really have put yourself in a very impressive array of neighbors with things that are being brought to the world and have a worldwide impact. So, thank you for joining that group, and we're honored to have you in our community.
Well, thank you. We're honored to be here.
So, appreciate you.
Much appreciated.
Many years of togetherness and business growth for your company in our town.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go then to item ten, which is Resolution 1866-R, authorizing the mayor to execute a licensing agreement with the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization. Who's got this one? Alderman Atack?
Yeah. So, I was hoping they'd be here tonight, so we could put a picture up on the screen. Do we have a picture somewhere of what, is the flag monument, it doesn't?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Would you like to take this, Laura?
Sure.
Okay.
The Fox Valley Patriotic Organization is organized for the purpose of commemorating Flag Day in conjunction with the heritage of the city of Batavia. And they are undertaking the designing and development and construction of a Flag Day monument that honors not only the history of Dr. Sagrand, but also the history of the United States' flag and what that has meant to our country throughout its history. Previously, city council approved a location for the Flag Day monument on City Hall property, which is located just to the west side of City Hall and north of the west-side parking lot, but on the east side of Peton Center, in what is now an open green area. The agreement, the license agreement that you have before you today is the Patriotic Organization is going to take care of the construction, operation, maintenance, and repair of the Flag Day monument. They have pledged in this agreement that an endowment fund will be created with the Community Foundation of the Fox River Valley that will provide sufficient funding for the care of the monument into perpetuity. And that's basically the gist of this agreement, is just providing a funding mechanism for the ongoing maintenance of the monument.
Any comments or questions on that? I would just, Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, I would just say, as a member of the organization, we are committed to making sure that the funding isn't just out of Batavia, but it is a, an entire Fox Valley destination that we want to make it. And we've secured so far at least $260,000 already in funding for this, and the goal is to make sure that it is in perpetuity, that it will fund itself, and that's what this agreement is about, so that we do not use any tax dollars for it.
Now, I would just offer up that this really, I think, is a unique moment for Batavia and its history, because this flag thing has been kind of lingering around town, literally, for over a hundred years, when Sagrand was here in 1916, and Woodrow Wilson originally proclaimed American Flag Day that year as kind of a patriotic act at the advent of World War I. And from there, it kind of got out that this is where we were kind of running this idea through the United States of America. So, that's in our genes too, as, along with some of the other stuff I just talked about with the international connections that we have. So, I think this speaks well, not only for the community, but certainly, I think, speaks well for the future of our downtown and the visitors to downtown and all the interactions that we have for the Riverwalk and the Depot Museum and all the other great things that we have down here. Batavia, I think, is really setting itself up to be a place for people to visit for the next, literally, hundred years, as people come in and appreciate this really rare touch of American history that you aren't gonna find anyplace else in the United States. So, we got a lot to be proud of here, and we got probably more history than most of the other cities in the region, but we don't want to flaunt that. But I think this is something very special, and I would think that it's gonna be very, will be the envy of a lot of places when this gets built, because some of the ideas and innovation that have been put into this design, I think, will be very impressive to people when they see what has been put together. And the mere fact that, at the end of the day, what we're doing here is we're putting off, putting before us a fund that will help to sustain this thing and hold it in place and repair it and maintain it, you know, for generations to come, speaks well to the seriousness and the commitment that this thing really has. And so, we're just not putting something up and expecting somebody else to pay for it or preserve it or maintain it, or whatever you want to say, in the future. And hopefully, this will be a facility that, you know, specifically, veterans of our country and others who have a great patriotic feeling about them will be able to point to this with a great sense of pride, that this really is Batavia, saluting the efforts of the history of the American patriotism, patriotic movement throughout our country. So, I would encourage our support. Alderman Callahan?
I just want to also add, based on what you were just saying about the tone of it and the educational opportunities that the monument's going to bring in, the tourism that people will come to Batavia just to see, but as you kind of mentioned earlier, anyone that attended Walter Backman's funeral on last Monday would ultimately understand and completely feel that respect and reverence that was there that day, that seventy-seven years later, we're welcoming one of our own home, even though most of us weren't even alive when he died. And I think that's probably one of the most important things about why the flag monument is here, is the foundational patriotic feeling that runs through this town.
Any other comments? I guess we need a motion?
I move we approve Resolution 18-62-R, authorizing, authorization to execute a license agreement for the construction, operation, and perpetual maintenance and repair of a Flag Day monument on city of Batavia property.
I just wanted to make mention 1866. Does it say 62 there? It should be 1866.
Okay, I, yeah, it does say 62. Okay, 1866.
Second. Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Saron for the approval of Resolution 18-66-R for the licensing agreement with the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Saron? Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no no's, two absent. All right, moving to item number 11, is approval of a fireworks permit for the Batavia Fireworks Committee in care of Mark Davis at the June 4, 2018 meeting, to be used exactly a month from today, on July 4, at Engstrom Park across from Batavia High School, for the 68th Annual Batavia Fireworks Show. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor.
Wolf?
This is for the 4th of July fireworks. Again, it will be Melrose Parotechnics providing the fireworks. We've got, I think it's at least a million-dollar insurance certificate that also came along with this, and as far as I know, we have no issues from fire department, police. The wonderful fireworks committee will have everything ready to go, and we'll have some great weather.
Any other discussion about this?
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Chief, you have any comments you wanna?
Nope, no comments. It's all in order.
Therefore, I'd like to have the, make the motion that the City Council authorize a firework permit for the fireworks committee in care of Mark Davis for the evening of July 4, 2018.
Second.
Moved by Wolf. There was three of you said that.
Already.
Callahan gets it? Okay. Motion, second, for the approval of the fireworks permit. Kirk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the fireworks permit is approved. Twelve yes, no no's, two absent. Moving to 12, which is ordinance 18-28, vacation of part of Goldenrod Drive turnaround. Who's got this one? Alderman Stark?
On this particular piece of land, staff noted that the area that the city owned at the end of this hammerhead-type turnaround was larger than most easements, and so, what we are doing is vacating the land back to the property owners that abut this property. So, instead of what would have been 20, or actually, most hammerhead turnarounds are 20 feet in length, this one is 40 feet in length on each side, so the excess of property will be vacated back to those owners. And at a City Council meeting, it was discussed that the property owners, we wanted to make sure that they were well notified, and so, we asked staff to please send letters.
Certified.
Certified, thank you. Certified letters to the property owners. The receipts did come back, both of them were notified, and so, this is just moving the vacation forward, and so, it now is that we do maintain the utility easements. However, the property does go back to the owners of the adjacent properties. And so, this actually clarifies that we now no longer have any ownership in, in what used to be the land on the end of the hammerheads. So, I would move that we approve ordinance 1828, vacation of part of Goldenrod Drive right-of-way turnaround.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Salvati, for the approval of the vacation of part of Goldenrod Drive turnaround. Any discussion? What was it? Janzett?
Janzett.
Close.
Hard to tell voices.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no no's, two absent, and one abstention.
And then, to take out to that, ordinance 1834 is the conditional use permit for utility facility in the G.C. General Commercial District. I move that we approve ordinance 1834.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of ordinance 1834, the conditional use permit for utilities, facility, and the general commercial, general district for fiber, Metro Fiber Net. Any discussion on that? Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien? Sorry. Callahan?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Eleven yes, no no's, two absent, and one abstention.
And then, to take out to that, ordinance 1834 is the conditional use permit for utility facility in the G.C. General Commercial District. I move that we approve ordinance 1834.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of ordinance 1834, the conditional use permit for utilities, facility, and the general commercial, general district for fiber, Metro Fiber Net. Any discussion on that? Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien? Sorry. Callahan?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Eleven yes, no no's, two absent, and one abstention.
And then, to take out to that, ordinance 1834 is the conditional use permit for utility facility in the G.C. General Commercial District. I move that we approve ordinance 1834.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of ordinance 1834, the conditional use permit for utilities, facility, and the general commercial, general district for fiber, Metro Fiber Net. Any discussion on that? Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
That motion's approved. Eleven yes, no no's, two absent, and one abstention.
And then, ordinance 1836, again, more housekeeping. This will amend the official zoning map for general commercial development with a planned development in South River Gateway Overlay District. And again, it is housekeeping to change what the original land use map was and the original zoning map was. This one changes the zoning map. And so, I make a motion, we're still getting to the good part, which is 1837, 1836 is amending the official zoning map for general commercial development with a planned development in South River Gateway Overlay District.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Callahan, for the approval of ordinance 1836, amending the official zoning map for a planned unit, for planned development on, at South River Street Gateway Setback Overlay District at 1305 through 1355 South River Street. Any discussion on that?
I'll just say, I'm really glad we're getting industrial off the river.
I agree. Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Are you abstaining, Salvati?
Yep.
Thank you. Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
That motion's approved. Eleven yes, no no's, two absent, and one abstention.
And then, ordinance 1836, again, more housekeeping. This will amend the official zoning map for general commercial development with a planned development in South River Gateway Overlay District. And again, it is housekeeping to change what the original land use map was and the original zoning map was. This one changes the zoning map. And so, I make a motion, we're still getting to the good part, which is 1837, 1836 is amending the official zoning map for general commercial development with a planned development in South River Gateway Overlay District.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Callahan, for the approval of ordinance 1836, amending the official zoning map for a planned unit, for planned development on, at South River Street Gateway Setback Overlay District at 1305 through 1355 South River Street. Any discussion on that?
I'll just say, I'm really glad we're getting industrial off the river.
I agree. Any other discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Are you abstaining, Salvati?
Yep.
Thank you. Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
That motion's approved. Eleven yes, no no's, two absent, and one abstention.
Okay. Then, ordinance 1837, this is the good one. This is the conditional use permit for fun, for an entertainment and recreation indoor/outdoor large-scale use in the general commercial district at 1335 through 1355 South River Street. Bob Hanson, Windmill City Entertainment is the applicant. And he is here tonight, and so, he can come up and explain a little bit more about what Funway is doing to increase their footprint down on South River Street, but it's gonna be big, and it's gonna be exciting, so, I defer to Bob to explain to the town what's going on down there.
Hey, Bob, we're gonna get you on TV, so you come up there and use it.
Well, we really hope that it's gonna be a lot more fun than a lot of things you go through. First of all, I'd like to introduce my son, Dominic, back there. Dominic will be the one you'll see in the future. Over the next few years, I'll be phasing out slowly, but I'll be there as a father, guiding him, and hoping that he can continue the next 35, 40 years like I've been in this business. So, good luck, Dominic. Any questions you have? See Dominic. As you can see up on the overheads here, the go-kart track's about 1,000 foot long. It'll be one of the largest go-kart tracks in Illinois. It'll be a family track with the options of putting faster go-karts on it if we want to down the road. Right now, we're gonna have a, three sets, maybe four sets of go-kart tracks, 'cause we are keeping our existing track. We'll have kiddie go-karts, middle-sized go-karts, and then a little larger go-kart for the adults and the teenagers in that crowd. Part of the process, though, is to enlarge the parking lot. As you can see, in the front of the producer's lot there, we're adding a large parking lot. That's the first stage, which we really need to get done first. The second stage is the go-kart tracks. We didn't get the concrete poured yet this year, and open up next year. The back parking lot, then, that exists now, will be taken out right when the kids go back to school. We'll close down the outdoor attractions and start the miniature golf course. We are working on the theme of our miniature golf course, but I lost out on buying some really cool windmills in this town a few weeks ago. So, we're working on that. So, we're still working on our theme. We've got the, the holes are all, it's a really cool, challenging miniature golf course. And then, we'll have some additional parking in back, and a little addition on the side of the building, 'cause we lost a lot of our storage capacities by losing the old producer's chemical building. That'd be about 5,000 square feet of maintenance space back there for us now, which we like to do everything in-house, you know? Questions?
Any questions?
How many years has Funway been in business, Ben?
Funway started in 1959. Some of you, I'm sure, remember Dick Burry back in the day. His first track was a indoor go-kart track, actually, right over here on.
Where Kiss the Sky is.
Right. Right behind there in the building back there. An indoor track for about two years, and then he moved over to Route 25, actually, where Valley Auto is. What's, is it Valley Auto still?
Yeah.
Had a little track over there from 61 or 2 to 67, 68. Then he moved to the site we're presently on, where the power plant used to be. So, the power plant knocked down in 67-ish, 68, I believe, and then he built a go-kart track, added batting cages. As years went on, he added a BMX go-kart track. I bought the facility in 1990, so we've been expanding since then. As you know, we opened up the bowling center in '04, which is a great addition for us. It's really worked well. And this outdoor park will really, hopefully, draw from a larger radius for us. Right now, our radius is anywhere from 15 to 20 miles on a regular basis. Our skating rink draws people from 50, 60 miles on a weekly basis. Skaters really are addicted to skating. They really travel from rink to rink to rink, and unfortunately, rinks are closing around the area, or there's not too many left. But we've got a good following still. It's working really well. And then, the bowling center, as you know, is 20 lanes. We've been really busy this year with Bowling Green closing down in West Chicago. Things picked up quite a bit for us after that. So, you know, I don't know what Dominic will do down the road, but we'll see.
Your Honor, I'd just like to commend Bob and his family for what they've done over the years. It just, as you just mentioned, with all the skating rinks that are closing and the bowling alleys that are closing, and yet, you're expanding, and you're doing it right here in Batavia. And so, obviously, it's, it's gotta be a good location for you, but it's also the way you're running your business and the way you're taking care of the families that come there, and so, I just wanna commend you on what you're doing. I'm certainly gonna support this expansion.
Thank you.
Alderman Callahan?
Along those same lines, I'd like to make sure that our South Batavian neighbors are using it fully, too.
And you said that the new karts are not only just speed-wise, but they're also timed, each one?
We're gonna have a timing system on the track, because our go-karts are all tuned to run at the same speed.
Right.
Right? So, there'll be a timing system up there. It'll show first through third position, and the fastest lap will actually be first position. So, if you get 10 laps or so, 15 laps in a race, your fastest lap will be posted, and that'll be the ranking. So, it really comes down to driver's skill.
So, we can have a council challenge and come down here and throw that out there? We are gonna have a council challenge. Challenge accepted. Yep. It will be fun.
So, I try to go out in the community every day and see people, and so, I generally stop in the coffee shops. So, last week, I'm in one of the coffee shops, and there was, I think it was four or five ladies from the homestead were sitting there, and they immediately saw me, so they called me over, and they said, "You have to answer a question for us." And I said, "Be happy to." They said, "Well, there's a new TV commercial on for green fields in Geneva and Friendship Well, they thought it...
We'll work on that, though. We'll work on that. That's good.
Better place.
Because they, and then they were saying that they, they thought that was an interesting idea for senior ladies and gentlemen that wanted to go out and, you know, show their control abilities and whatever have you, and as long as they couldn't get hurt in these nice little go-karts, they could have a lot of fun driving a go-kart. So, I'm not so sure, you know, you aren't going to hear something from the homestead one of these days wanting to bring a busload of them down there for you.
Senior racers, okay.
I'm the no-one who do that. I want to come down and watch.
I don't know if you recall, but back when I first bought Funway, we used to do a driver's ed program for the kids on the go-kart track, and the driver's ed program. I don't know if the police department remembers that or not. But we had, they made a goggle that you put on that simulated drunk driving, and we would put them on the kids in a go-kart, and that would give them a feel for drunk driving. It was a really cool thing. I don't recall why it stopped and it ended, but it showed the kids a real sense of what really happens under the influence.
Are there many other go-kart places in the Chicago Land area?
Right now, there's about a half a dozen tracks. Most of them are small.
You, are you the largest?
We are one of the, there's a larger one down in Decatur. We're number two or three with this track.
How do you measure the size, the length of it, or...
Yeah, just the length of it, right.
So, as a parent who has spent the night at the All Night Skate, has spent more time than I care to admit at the batting cages, and driven the go-kart track and roller skated, I make the motion that we approve ordinance eighteen dash thirty-seven, conditional use permit for an entertainment and recreation indoor, outdoor, large-scale use in the general commercial district at thirteen thirty-five through thirteen fifty-five South River Street. Bob Hanson, Windmill City Entertainment, applicant.
Second? Move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Callahan, for the approval of ordinance eighteen dash thirty-seven, a conditional use permit for an entertainment and recreational indoor and outdoor large-scale use in the general commercial district at thirteen oh-five to thirteen thirty-five South River Street. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atak? Aye.
Motion's approved, eleven yes, no-nos, two absent. Congratulations, and we look forward to many years of recreational fun at Funway.
Well, hopefully, a year from now, we can schedule that race that you all want to be part of. Thank you, everyone. I want to let you know also that staff was great to work with, really great.
Thank you. Okay, moving to eighteen, the administrative report.
Laura?
Well, I'd like to echo what Alderman Brown mentioned about Bob Hanson's business here in Batavia, and it is always so exciting to see businesses in Batavia when they choose to expand and add new elements to their business, that they do that right here in Batavia. And I'd also like to thank you for the time and the things that you do for the city of Batavia. You're very involved in our community. Even though you are a business owner, and that must keep you so busy, you still give more of your time to various community organizations, and I wanted to thank you for that. Have a lot of exciting things to talk about in the areas of community and economic development right now. The Windmill Manor apartments are nearing completion, and remember, that's eighty units of senior housing. And right across the street from there is the plan for Windmill Landings, and this is a hundred and forty-two units of senior housing in a progressive fashion. So, it starts off as independent living. There are also units that are dedicated to assisted living, and then there are a certain number of units that are memory care as well. So, people can continue to live in the same community as they move through those various stages, and I think it's good and synergistic to have these two properties located across the street from one another, but also within walking distance of, the Walmart is very close to there, and any of those shops and restaurants that are near to there are accessible via walking. Also, we received revised plans for Winding Creek. This is the Landmeyer property development that's planned for that farmland that is directly behind the former Sam's Club. That will be another two hundred rooftops here in the city of Batavia, a mixture of single-family homes as well as townhomes. And so, staff will be reviewing that shortly. Also, the Plan Commission on June sixth will hear the following items. There will be a variance for Burrito Perea, freestanding sign. Burrito Perea took over the former White Castle, and they are at seventy-six South Randall Road. Also, a conditional use for Starfish Animal Rescue, which will be located on Oswalt Drive. And then also, the land swap with the Park District, the City Hall Pegbond Center subdivision in cooperation with the Park District. We also received the submittal for the parking lot and playground improvements at the Park District's East Side Community Center. Those are under review and will be heard by the Plan Commission and Historic Preservation Commission in the very near future. And then finally, staff is working on various items related to the Prairie Commons project, including review of the stormwater revisions, creation of a backup special service area, and fielding comments and complaints related to the grading and the tree removal activities on that site. And in Public Works, they are extremely busy. The Wilson and College Stormwater Project is currently out to bid. The Riverbank Stabilization Project is out to bid. Annual Crack Fill Program is out to bid, and the annual resurface program in combination with the Community Development Block Grants Program is scheduled to be submitted to the Illinois Department of Transportation for their final review next week. The water main construction in Area Three is nearing completion, which I'm sure that those folks over there are happy to hear that. Storm sewer construction in Area Three has commenced and with the work going on in the cemetery. Progress on the wastewater treatment plant project continues. Unfortunately, contractor continues to run about twenty-five days behind schedule. However, steps have been identified to reduce the time schedule of site work, and this will help improve the overall schedule once the two main structures have been completed. Our environmental consultant has been given approval to move forward on their work with the One Washington Place site. They'll be on-site Wednesday, June sixth, to perform additional boring so that we can get a better idea of the size of the field of excludable materials that will need to be remediated from that site. And that's it. Does anyone have any questions for me? Alderman Meitzler?
Just on the note of the environmental side, it's looking awfully green over on the Siemens property.
Yes.
Have we heard anything further on the fencing?
I'll let Scott field that question.
They are waiting until seventy percent vegetation is done. I think it's getting close, but not quite there yet. But as soon as it's seventy percent vegetated, then they will be able to take the fence down and put up no trespassing signs, because they're not intending for people to just be using it as a public park or anything like that.
Sure.
So, they're waiting a little bit longer for it to further germinate, and then once that happens, the fence will come down. Great.
Hopefully, they've got a lawnmower crew ready. Starting to have its moments. As long as I got Laura up here, can you give us any insights as to any conversations we're having about the closing of the Chase Bank on South Batavia Avenue?
I actually don't know much about that, Scott. Have you heard any word?
We just know that they're closing.
Yeah, that's...
Any more detail about why or when? I think it actually may be closed already.
I'm not so much, I can understand why, but I'm just more interested in what may happen on that particular piece of property, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Could be a very interesting one. I guess, anybody that comes in, I guess I just speak for myself and suggest that, you know, we've already had our dismay about One Washington and its removal of retail from that, that particular project. I would hope if anybody is going to come in and talk about redoing that bank site, and I'm sure they may want to, and add some new building and density to it, that I hope they've got it in their head that they want to take the, at least the Batavia Avenue and Main Street frontage of that thing and keep it in some type of a retail, commercial use or business use, than that, that we don't turn that particular downtown site, because that one really represents the entryway into the downtown Batavia Business District, and I really would, I think we'd have a difficult, I would have a difficult moment standing here, sitting here, trying to tell, supporting the idea that we let them do something that doesn't have a retail component to it. So, I just want, as far as I'm concerned, I want that out there as my statement. If any of the rest of you object to that, fine, but I, please feel free to say so, but I just think that that's a, a community staple that really needs to maintain its presence there, and it's been that way for, you know, a hundred and fifty years, and I don't think we should be changing that one at the moment. So, everybody, we burned that block down a couple times over the last hundred and fifty years, and we've always returned it to retail, so I would hope that we would, or some type of a business, so we...
It could be a very interesting piece of property to develop with, with what the bank owns on it, and then the portion that was proposed to be townhouses at one time that now BEI owns. And then you've got the portion that is even doxed, that I think there's been some consideration of what they want to do there over the years, and so that whole area there could be some interesting things to go on. But I absolutely agree with you that we would need to keep the retail on, on the Wilson Street side there, or on the Batavia Avenue side.
Right. The mayor over in Western Springs, a gal by the name of Alice Gallagher is a friend of mine, and she and I have had some interesting conversations recently. She serves on my board in Chicago, and in downtown Western Springs right now, they've got kind of the exact same formula that Batavia has going, in that they're right on the north, or the Burlington Railroad track there, and so they get a heavy commuter use, but they've got old downtown that is now, some of which is being torn down and being replaced by new upscale apartments and stores, storefronts, and whatever have you. So, I'm suggesting to her that at some point, maybe we'll have some kind of a little meeting amongst all of us, and we can come over and tell each other about what we've done in our town, because there's a huge similarity to what they have, that they've got a site there on, right on the south side of the railroad tracks there that's now under construction, and right next to it is an old gas station. Exactly what we got up here on Batavia Avenue. And so, there's a lot of similarities to kind of what we're all talking about, and the design of the building, as near as I can tell, is all very similar, as other things that we've talked about it over at Washington. So, there's some people out there that are kind of having the exact same experience we do, and I think it could benefit us to get together and have some note comparing. So, I think it's just something to keep in mind. I'm trying to put something together, and have some conversation with those folks. Any other questions, Laura? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports, community development. Alderman Brown?
No report, your honor, but a couple meetings to announce. Tomorrow evening, the committee of the whole will be meeting at seven AM, seven PM, rather. I'll be here at seven if you guys want to, but... And then Plan Commission is scheduled to meet Wednesday, June sixth, at seven PM. Did I say that right? The committee of the whole is seven-thirty. Plan Commission is seven. And then Historic Preservation is scheduled for June eleventh at five-thirty. That's all I have.
Committee of the whole? Committee of the whole is seven.
Committee of the whole is seven, too.
Committee of the whole is at seven. That's correct, yes.
All right, Government Services, Alderman Atak?
We are going to continue working on strategic planning, and I believe that is June twelfth. They said eleventh or twelve? Now, I'm...
Eleven.
Eleventh, okay. So, the night of the eleventh, and it will be in the East Side Fire Station.
From seven to ten.
Seven to ten, thank you.
Any services, Alderman?
I don't believe we have anything on the agenda. Thank you.
Anybody on Public Utilities, Alderman Chantet? Do you have any? All right, any other business from the council? Okay, I just want to take a minute under twenty-one to share an experience I had, another experience I had here. Last week, I was coming out the door of City Hall, and I get my name yelled at me, and so, not the title, but the name, so it's somebody from the past, because many of them remember me as my name, not my title, and it was fine. So, this couple's standing there, and it took me a minute to recognize who I was talking to, but I was some people that I knew when I was a kid in Batavia. And that woman had grown up here, and she made a reference to, you know, she said, "Well, I haven't been in this town in fifty-six years." And she says, "I cannot believe where I'm at and what's happened here." "I am just blown away," was her words, with what I'm seeing in Batavia today over what I remember this being. And she started recalling, she was one of the ice skaters, you know, was one of them wanted to tell me she was in the painting on the Saturday Evening Post cover and all this other good stuff. But she was recalling that site, and she says, "I remember all the junk in the storage and the trash, and when the barrels by the ice skating used to, the fire started going down, we could go over into the factory yard here, and there'd be littering around, or old chunks of wood, and we could take it over and throw it." It was like a little junkyard that you used to burn up to keep the thing, the barrels burning. And she says, "Here I am, and what have you done here? You've made this into a garden," was the way she described it to me, and I've had that description before. But then she went on to say, "I can't believe how you expanded this." And she says, "Larsen and Becker is gone. It's totally gone, and you've made it into a park. And what a dynamic view that is," and whatever. And then she got going about, she says, "What are you doing on the south end of this street down here where the sewer plant used to be?" I said, "Well, that's still the sewer plant, but it's now totally imposed, modernized. We're removing phosphorus from the river and all, or before we dump it into the river and all this other great stuff." And she says, "Again, I just can't believe that Batavia would spend that much money on upgrading a sewer plant. That's got to be..." I said, "Well, it is millions of dollars, but you have to appreciate it's a, it's a multi-generational investment that people are going to use for many, many years to come, and so, obviously, it'll be paid for over a long period of time, and many people will get very strong use out of it." So, then she says to me, "I just can't believe what's happened here." She says, "I, you know, I used to think of Batavia how it was fifty-six years ago, when I left here and went off to college and got married and never came back." And she says, "I come in here today, and I see what has happened, and I am just so proud that this is my hometown," because, she says, "I went to my husband's class reunion a couple years ago," and she didn't name the town, but she says, "They were in southern Indiana, and the town was pretty well deflated. There wasn't much happening, and most of the place was boarded up." And she says, "I've always thought that the Fox River was a great asset in Batavia, but you guys have really made it quite the place here with all the Riverwalk and the bike trails and all the access to it, and all the stuff that you've done here is just fabulous." So, I just wanted to share that with you, that, you know, we sit here and have these weighted discussions and all this about what we are, aren't doing here, but you take somebody who was here fifty-six years ago and take them out of the picture for fifty-six years and then bring them back, and they look at what is here today, and they remember what was here when they left, and they're like unbelievable, that they cannot believe that this has changed. And she says, "You know, I thought maybe I'd come back here and be really disappointed. I'm going to go back to..." I think she now lives in Florida. She says, "I'm going to go back and brag about my old hometown, that talk about it really didn't, never was allowed to decline. It's better than it has ever been, and I'm very proud to be able to say that I came from Batavia, Illinois." So, I felt really good about that, you know, that they, you get that with some regularity. I've had the opportunity to speak, I think, to the last three or four high school class reunions out of Batavia High School that are in their fiftieth reunion, including mine last year. And every one of them always has somebody that makes kind of those similar comments. But this was one lady that just came in here, I think she was here because of a family funeral that was maybe going on and some stuff, but just couldn't say enough. So, pat yourselves on the back, because what we are doing here really is getting a positive stroke in the, in the rest of the world, and this wasn't coming from somebody that lives here now, but somebody who lived here fifty-six years ago and remembered how it was, and was so pleased that it is so much better than what it was when they, when they left. So, I felt good about that, because I think many times we sometimes constrain ourselves and wonder, "Are we doing the right thing?" Well, obviously, we're doing something here that is the right way, and, you know, we'll continue to make mistakes as councils and mayors go forward, but, you know, I think the, and I, as you've heard me say before, there, there were some city officials, certainly before I was mayor, that did some stuff here. Mayor, or Mayor Brown, Dave's father, and Art Swanson, Peg Bond, who was chairman of the Plan Commission, Phil Elstrom, who was chairman of the county board, four individuals, Jim Hanson, who was chairman of the City Council Community Development Committee for many, many years. Those were people that really had some far-sighted vision, because those were the ones who were here when this thing was still in its kind of dire, dire strait, and they took an unbelievable amount of grief and opposition from people who said, "Oh, that's, nobody's ever going to do that. That doesn't ever work." You know, you'll never get all these buildings redone or whatever. And, you know, all those folks are gone now, but some of them lived long enough to begin to see what was happening, but I think they should have a great crown of pride on themselves for what has really been committed here, because this didn't happen overnight, and it certainly, the credit certainly doesn't belong to me or probably to any particular city council, but it's been an idea that they kind of created back in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties about what Batavia could become at the core. And, you know, the town grew, and we went out on all these sides of town and bought in all these new subdivisions, and that's good. I mean, they were all done at quality, but they took this old downtown, which had originally been the way, where the place had been settled and why it was settled, and, you know, we took this river, river, and we really have done some wondrous things with it. So, I hope our commitment remains that we keep the river at the forefront of the city's vision as to what we really can do, because that's really, I think, a, a crown jewel that does get a lot of appreciation by people, both the future generations yet to be coming in here, and certainly the past ones, who remember how it used to be used and was and what's been created today. So, when we spend money and sometimes get criticized for doing something in the downtown, you know, I think at the end of the day, it's going to be, boy, that was vision to be able to buy, you know, I'll cite the Larson and Becker as, as a good example, and I think fact that we got it, were able to take command of it, put it into its kinda temporary status, which is not bad, and create some ideas for people to think about what they wanna do here. You know, Saturday I was at the, did a ribbon cutting over at the farmer's market and the crowd over there was one of the best I've ever seen. And the fact that we bring all those people into our downtown would make all these people I just mentioned, their faces smile if they could see all that activity in our downtown and the fact that it's really right here center, it's not east side, it's not west side, as you look at how it interreacts, it's both sides of the river. And we really have done a great job of reclaiming that river and bringing some things back that really make Batavia a place to proudly call your home. So I wanna thank all of you for that. I also wanna remind everybody that this coming Sunday afternoon is the Flag Day Bulldogs Unleashed Festival. It's going to be kind of a joint little celebration and a number of you have signed up to help scoop ice cream for the fireworks fund and the Flag Day Fund and everybody's, we've got like three different groups come together and the community band's gonna be here and the unique thing this year is going to be, I'm looking at the clock here because it's quarter to nine and I'm only looking at it as to how dark it is right now because next Sunday night, we're gonna do something different. The Flag Day Committee has come up with this idea of these floating batteries, I'll call them, on the, on the depot pond. And I've enlisted the help of the Batavia Fire Department and they're bringing the cadets and a couple guys down and we're gonna launch the fire department rescue boat, which we have, into the depot pond and we're gonna light up over 100 baskets that are gonna be put into the water and they're gonna float around out in the water and they're all gonna have a patriotic theme to them. And I don't know how this is gonna be. I, I still scratch my head at it and the fire chief asked me the other day, "How big are these? Can you send me a picture?" So I went and took a picture, but he wasn't in the office today, but I don't think it's gonna be a problem because they're just worried that the baskets, they're not out, there's no, there's no fire in them, it's all battery thing, it looks like a flame coming out of the little baskets. And these little baskets are gonna float around the depot pond for a while and a lot of people think it's gonna be a real interesting little thing. And so during the daylight hours, they're going to have some local guys who have joined the fireworks committee have come up with a family game deal, that they're going to have a whole bunch of family games down here for people to play. And with the cooperation of the Main Street and the, and the Chamber of Commerce, we've got a whole bunch of other groups, all the girls' dance teams in town are coming down to dance and, so I think we're gonna have a nice collection of people in here and it should be, hopefully the weather's going to be okay and it should be a memorable night, but we're doing some different things in Batavia this year and I just wanna stress that word, this is gonna be a little bit different than we've done before. We're not doing the luminary, which is another great idea and maybe we can use that another time. This is gonna be these lit candle baskets in the river. So we're gonna see how this goes. So come on down for a few minutes. I'd say right about now will be prime time as everybody comes to see what this basket presentation in the river, under the watchful eye of the Batavia Fire Department is going to be. But the fire and police obviously are real good friends of ours in this whole thing because the police maintain a high degree of security and safety for everybody, so I think everybody comes in here feeling real safe. And the fire department with their equipment has been a real friend to us all because like when we did the 60th anniversary of the Saturday Evening Post cover, we brought the ladder truck down and everybody got to stand out on the ice and wave at the cameraman and Mark Foster was one of them up in the basket. We got some really memorable pictures that 100 years from now, I think, are gonna be looked upon with great appreciation that we have those. And, but again, without the help of the fire department setting up that ladder truck and securing the riggers on that so we could do all that, I mean, we do some pretty creative stuff around here that I'm very proud of, that we, we all come together and know what we wanna do and the police and fire departments make sure we do it safely and don't get ourselves into trouble. And so we got a good thing going here and I just hope that Batavia appreciates what's going on, so. Enough said, but please come next Sunday because I think it could be a memorable afternoon. Alderman Brown, had entertaining motion?
Oh, we got executive session.
Yes, I move we enter into executive session for the purpose of land acquisition.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Savadi. Kirk, call the roll for the executive session.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizzotto?
Aye.
Atak?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Savadi?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Was it one no there?